Anything that keeps everybody very punctual.
Well, some of us have called a meeting to order. Is there any additions to the agenda? Here in down, somebody wishing the agenda was presented. Judy? Okay, any discussion on Judy's motion? Here in down, call a question of favor. Supposed, so it's carried. Okay, moving on to adoption of the previous minutes of June 12th. Any questions, errors, revisions? Okay, here in down, Will?
Will too.
Will move some? Any discussion on Will's motion? Here in down, call a question of favor. Supposed, Steve down, carried unanimously. Okay, we have a delegation from Scott Mitchell and Vulcan County Health and Wellness Foundation. We've got those helpers there, so.
The helpers will need a chair because they're gonna
They're gonna
Let me go along with that.
They're gonna criticize or create
Critique here for moral support. Yeah, let's get those things are going good, Tom.
The floor is yours for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hall. It's, I just want to say thank you actually to Karen for squeezing us in today. I know you guys didn't have delegations, so I thought I'd just fill in your calendar with some talk tonight. And it's about spreading good news. And it's about showing council from the foundation's viewpoint that your current president and past councils made a wise investment in health by supporting the foundation and what we've accomplished so far. So, and we want to just give a quick update. First off, I want to thank the two of you guys for, you know, short notice coming to the golf tournament in the morning. I want to clarify a couple of things because for those of you who don't, you know, know where we came from and where we're going, you know, we were formed roughly 2012. And we've been on a pathway of trying to take back autonomy over our healthcare systems in Vulcan County. And the foundation has worked tirelessly to be able to execute on quite a few promises going forward. One of the biggest ones is Phase One of the capital campaign. So, Phase One building on the building side has been accomplished, 2019, 2020. And thanks to your help and Vulcan County's help, we were able to and our donor patrons, we were able to crystallize on that promise. And we're going to continue to keep promising things. And we wanted to share a few highlights tonight. So, zoom back to June 16th, we had our second annual golf classic, which raised significant money. But it wasn't really, the golf thing wasn't put in place to raise money. It was actually put in place to put out some messaging and tell our donors, our community, the good things, what we did. We wanted to be represented by something that appears to be wellness movement is health. And we wanted to continue to do things such as the Wellness Challenge that's currently ongoing. And the golf classic, which gives people, you know, off their couches and out into the outdoors and does something together. It's been wildly successful. And you two fellows came to a bit of an announcement. I want to bring clarity to that announcement because, you know, like the bureaucracy that we know, AHS tends to sanitize their messaging because they're frankly a huge institution that, you know, runs on fear, to be honest. And fear stops them from doing the right things a lot of the times because they're controlled by politicians, no disrespect. But that's the situation they find themselves in. So, at the end of the day, when we started in 2019, 2020 with the capital plan, there was two phases to that plan. Phase one was the, was of course, the clinic and the wellness spaces that were strategically designed out of a needs assessment in 2015. And Phase Two, and Phase Two couldn't be done without Phase One because you had to move the clinic into camp space to have a lab expansion. Now, that lab expansion was in the muffled cries of Scott Holland on June 16th, were sanctioned by the Health Rehabilitation Plan. So, Phase Two is going to happen now, okay? Now, he didn't put any numbers to that, but because they have a, you know, post-election withdrawal and they don't, they have a new minister and they couldn't throw a number to it. We have a number, which we're not going to share right now, but we have a number. And whatever the number is, at the end of the day, the province is going to pay to have the lab expanded, okay? Now, so in that news release, if you were listening really carefully, you would hear that the lab is going to get redone. There's going to be a palliative care addition, so there's probably going to be another family suite of palliative care. And they're going to upgrade the pharmaceutical services there because it's kind of going to covey hole. It's not to spec, it's not accredited space. So, 2015, we did a needs assessment up till 2030, so we kind of soft targeted 2025, or soft targeted 2030. And we've already superseded those numbers in terms of the work that they've done in the lab. And that's, you know, you can walk in there and all that difference. I mean, we're entertaining people from outside Vulcan County into that, into that space. So, I River, Oak, Oakstrath, Moore, across the river to Claris Home. There's, their numbers are significantly superseding 2030's numbers, which were mined by data in 2015 for the needs assessment. So, it's long overdue. Right now, there's no timing to this, but we should have an answer in the next two to three weeks from AHS when capital planners over infrastructure can meet with us. And we can talk about a more hard date for the beginning of what's going to be a transformation in that lab, in the lab services area. So, we wanted to celebrate that with our municipal partners. That's why we phoned you guys in last minute and said, hey, these guys are going to talk about the future in the way that they talk about the future. So, we will, I just wanted to give clarity tonight to council for that, to make sure that you fully understood that. And I'll add any questions to that afterwards, which is fine. The other thing I wanted to share was, you know, what we're doing as a foundation to continue our quest to put more back into Vulcan County. And that's really why we exist. I don't think I've had your ear about talking about radiology associates. There's two guys at our golf tournament that participated from Dr. David Motiek's creation of the ultrasound lab that we now have, ultrasound diagnostic imaging that we have in the community. So, that, I mentioned that at the golf tournament, you know, it went away 30 years ago and now it's back, okay? Now, to talk about that, I think that's super important because when he first phoned, when David first phoned me, he said that he was having difficulty with AHS and he needed the foundation to advocate for this service. And, you know, he reached out to, he had clients in Champion that were 82 years old that were driving to Lethbridge for that service. And it's, it's not client centered when they're doing that. It's unsafe, it's, it's not what we, what we want to do. And we want to bring more services back to the community, not less. So, this is a big win for, for Motiek's company because it, I think it had seven or eight doctors actually associated with radiology associates. And he had a tech that was living in Bela that could easily, well, say, to come out here and be able to come here two days a week to start, right? So, what have we done in that time? We've had approximately, say, since December, 300, 400 visits, let's say 300 visits. And what does that mean actually to a system that, you know, you would have to go to Urbania for that service for? So, 300 visits equals 60,000 kilometers saved, okay? So, now we're going to start to mine data around that equation, okay? Because we're going to apply for some green credits to come back and use them into research in the future. To say, hey, it's not just bringing the service back into a rural place where it makes sense to do strategically, but it's also in this day and age where carbon footprints are monitored and looked at, that maybe your health plan, your business plan, if you're AHS, should include that, that kind of methodology when you're looking at rural sites. So, this is absolutely new news to the provincial health leadership team. And we're going to, we're going to show you how, what this means a little more intimately. So, the radiology is one huge, huge win for the community. It's a massive win for the community. Keeps people in place, it's client centered, and it well serves people who live in that battalion. That's why we exist. And I wanted to show you that because there's a huge ROI in the investment that you made in 2019, 2020 with the foundation. And this is another example of how that pays back to the community, directly to the people who are, not only our donor patrons, but live, work, eat and breathe here and raise their families here. I think that's super important. Just a couple of other things, because I'm on the clock. I just wanted to just talk about some really cool stuff. There's a young lady that, that stood on hole number seven actually in the golf tournament. Her name's Emily Armstrong. Her dad, Ed, used to run the gymnasium physio here in town and passed away in, when year did he pass it?
2019.
Anybody know Ed? Anybody went to see Ed? Anyway, great guy, great service, lost that service. Emily is his daughter. And his mom actually works at the facility here at the healthcare center. Emily went off to the U of A and partnered with a guy named Dr. Martin Ferguson-Pell, who is the PhD professor of Faculty of Rehabilitative Robotic Medicine at the U of A. And Emily approached our executive and then we approached our board with the idea that what they wanted to do is apply for a grant and they needed somebody to provide a playground. And this is where it gets really interesting for, for footprint now is we're viewed as a living lab, a sandbox, a playground, a place that, that you can innovate without fear. And that's how we advocate for the spaces that are up in, in the facility, the wellness spaces anyway. And we are actively pursuing a JUA, a Joint Use Agreement with, with our collaborative health partners, AHS. And of course, that involves over infrastructure and all the guys that look after facilities in the province in a way that we can rev share any opportunities that go through there and they're now used to that formula. But we think a revenue share makes sense if we bring people to the table, the money goes back into the community foundation and it births other programs and other things to be able to look forward to. So, it's a unique opportunity for us to change rules. And the foundation's all about rural rules. So, with health is the one that we're involved in, but we'd like to see more rural formulas that advantage the disproportionate nature of doing business in a rural community. We're disproportionately affected by distance, governments, bureaucracies, rules, you name it. And we want to be able to take that disproportionate position and advantage the people who live here from it. And I think that takes a concerted effort. And this is one of the reasons we wanted to illuminate this to you is that this is an important shift in the way that the Business Health Plan that AHS pumps out, and we're part of Calgary region and the seven regions, we are part of the Calgary region. So, we're just an ant in a huge, you know, $14.5 billion budget that they have in its form. So, we need, we need a mindset when we talk to council so they understand that we're not just sitting still. Because if we sit still, we go backwards. There's no way that this foundation can sit still. There's too much momentum now and too many people have eyes on us. We had our two MPs at the, at the session. I don't know if you guys got a chance to jab those guys. Looks like they're redrawing lines in 2025, so John's going to take over from Martin, who's going to, whatever, whatever that looks like. I don't know if that's good or bad, but we'll find out later. But it was, it was great energy to have both those guys on site so they could get a sense of, you know, just the energy that was there. Now, along with Emily, who represents the U of A, and I'll talk about her initiative in a minute, were two other guys, Cal Costawich, who is a lifelong federal civil servant that works for the National Research Council of Canada. And his protege, Nicole?
Nicole.
Who was Nicole's husband?
I can't remember Nicole's husband.
Anyway, Nicole was there and I think they're both, are they both U of A?
Uh, they're, no, they're U of L.
U of L, okay, Nicole's U of L. But anyway, so at one point, Cal is going to, and I'll speak to why Cal's important, is going to hand the reins over to Nicole. The reason we had all these guys at this tournament was not only to deceive the good things that we're doing, but to get a feel for the energy this community has for its own health preservation, let's call it. And so, Gail went to a, I'm going to call it a health seminar, but what was it called, Gail?
It was an unconference, health unconference at U of L, beginning of June.
And so, she met up with Cal. She, yeah, she met up with Cal and then Cal came down and talked to us at an executive style meeting that we had to discuss Emily's project. So, Emily's project is kind of twofold. So, to start out with, our board's kind of sanctioned a collaborative partnership, let's call it, with the Rehabilitation Robotics Lab at the University of Alberta. Now, their team is working on a federal grant proposal, which will allow us to expand work in rural healthcare, increasing access to specialized rehabilitative services directly to farms, farmers and farming communities. One of the grants' major requirements is matching funding for our work. And so, we committed, I think it's a five-year project and we committed through Agrivita to give them, I think it was $10 grand a year for five years, so $50,000 over five years, which in that world is nothing. I think the total grant is around $5 million, something like that. They have one other partner, which is the Glanrose Foundation, Airview Foundation and Vulcan Foundation. So, this is, Agrivita is one of the biggest agricultural nonprofits in Canada. And what they do is vet federal funding for these programs to go into these innovative models and then see if they strike a chord. So, we're waiting on a September timeline to, for the U of A to get this grant that's solicited by Agrivita, which is situated at the University of Saskatoon. So, this, what this, what this means is, this, this concept of rural, a rural health pathway is literally a, it's a spoken hub concept, okay? So, if you can imagine the wheel, we are all the spokes, our sister communities are all the spokes. And the hub is wherever the medical hub can be. It, it, it could be in New York, it could be in Ontario, it could be in Alberta somewhere. But what it does is uses technology and I'm going to leave the, their little newsletter with you guys so you can have a look at this stuff. But what it does, it uses right now, two forms of telepresence. One is a double robotics robot, which just happened to have the same robot in the pharmacy that my pharmacist uses to do consults with. And a Apple-like looking device that, that they can elicit care from. So, what happens is, for example, someone would, would say, drive here from Champion. They would, they would arrange an appointment with, say, a ward clerk to talk to specialists. They would actually, because they're, if they're a vetted member, this patient panel will be able to, this is all in a perfect world, be able to self-direct themselves right to the specialist without having to go to a doctor. If they're a vetted patient panel member based on their history and so on and so forth. So, they would be able to come into this facility, go into a clinic space, one of the spare rooms that we have, join up with a registered nurse and talk to a specialist wherever they are in the world, okay? So, the Agrivita grant is a five-year grant, there's one year of community engagement. So, they're going to go around all over the place and talk to everybody about, okay, what are your specific needs? What do you want us to do, blah, blah, and they're going to sculpt it only to rural. So, this program doesn't go to urban. This program only stays in rural and looks after rural communities. If you're a farmer, if you're a farming community, if you're an indigenous person living in a farming community, if you're of Hutterian descent and live in a farming community. It even speaks to industrial pieces of rehabilitation. So, the cargills of the world would benefit from some of this, even though they're not within Vulcan County. The, the service model that it represents would look after that community. So, it's, it's a massive shift in the way people enter the system and access care in terms of specialist care. So, so they develop models on, you know, from diabetic models, hypertension, bone and joint. They're doing one with long COVID right now that's going to be, that we're going to start with first because we think that's a really cool one, doesn't exist anywhere else. So, this model doesn't exist in the province of the world, anywhere, nowhere. It will start here, will be birthed here and then, and then scalable to other, say, rural communities in the province where they can see benefit from. So, it's going to be peer reviewed, white papered and then presented at some point to Alberta Health, which really writes the rules on pathways. There are 14 AHS employees embedded in the working group in Edmonton. And really, our contact is, our main contact is Dr. Martin Ferguson-Pell and then Emily Armstrong will be the frontline cohort in it. So, that's, that's kind of Phase One to the Rehabilitation Robotics piece, which I think is heroic because it uses technology to elicit care in a rural community that's disproportionately affected by technology and distance, okay? So, it's stunningly obvious that we need to bring all these people together. And the work that Pell has done is incredible. Like, made the mistake, and I've got it here too, I made the mistake downloading his resume, it's like 22 pages long. I went save, 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 no, oh, it just goes 22 pages, I won't get back, but. He, like, he's a brilliant guy, he's been working his whole life on some of these models. And he, I guess they were, they were enamored with this particular site because we had an appetite to create a sandbox, a play zone for them, to come down and just do what they needed to do to make sure that, you know, we were, and remember, this is federal money we're accessing. Who thought that was possible in your wildest dreams? So, entered Cal Costawich, which is on the National Research Council. He comes in and says, well, okay, the next phase of this, before I talk about him, the next phase of this is, U of A said, okay, we've applied for this grant, it's going to be September. We've got to get going before then. So, here's, here's another, you know, preemptive project that we want to create a living lab in Vulcan. Okay, what does that mean? Well, he says, I've, Martin Pell said, look, I've got so many PhD students, I can place them anywhere. They don't have to be in Edmonton. I think it'd be probably a better idea if they weren't in Edmonton. And what we want to do is create a living lab and place a pre-doctoral student, post-doctoral student in that living lab in Vulcan to do active research on the ground to preempt or, you know, cultivate the field, if you will, for when they can realize on the Agrivita grant. So, there's a lot at stake on this Agrivita grant, but Phase One is an $865,000, correct me if I'm wrong, Gail, budget that we will contribute 15,000 in kind for as a foundation. Everything else is going to be covered by U of A. They're going to go after the money to see if we can have a living lab here and put, and embed a post-doctoral student to kind of get the model going, do some, do some reach out and engagement and kind of light a fire in this thing. Because it is the future of health, it really is in rural. We need, access is such an obstacle, technology is an obstacle even for our smaller communities. And not to say that we can't have rural spokes that aren't in Vulcan. So, for example, we could use Arrowhead because there's a clinician in Arrowhead. We could possibly have a spoken Arrowhead, put in a telepresence unit in Arrowhead and that could be a mini hub to, as the thing matures out, right? So, so anyway, so it's, it's a two-faced thing. So, it's this $800,000 piece that they want to put a living lab in Vulcan and it's, it's a longer five-year commitment to try to change pathways in a permanent way to support the Vulcan Foundation, but also to take that information away and, and use it. So, entered Cal Costawich, so he comes to the game and says, hey, look, I know guys in U of L, computer science PhDs who can do some machine learning on this and we can take all the data that we gather through this whole process. We can, we can pump it out into formulas and peer reviewed information bursts that support the ability to change the pathways because everybody needs, the system that is AHS wants to, lives on fear. We want to take away the fear by creating a new model without having those guys to be the architects of it. Now, they're not good at giving away control. Go figure. And so, they were a little, little taken aback when we presented them with this. Because, remember, this is Edmonton region, 14, 14 AHS employees that are working on this are from the Edmonton region. Not always talking to the Calgary region, you know? And when we presented the Calgary region, they went, well, their first thoughts were, well, you need permission to do that. Well, actually, you know what, I don't think we did. I don't think we actually need permission to do this, we're going to do this anyway. And once they got their minds around it and they need encouragement that way, you know, they are becoming more receptive to what's going on because their Edmonton brethren didn't talk to their Calgary brethren about, about this program. So, they knew nothing about this until we went, oh, yeah, we've already applied for this, the board's okayed it, we're going to go ahead with this, we just need space. And that's why it comes back to the JUA. We haven't got a JUA yet with these guys because it takes forever to do those things. Doesn't really matter because we're going to act on the space without a JUA. We're just going to act on the space and advocate, just like we did for Motiek, to get into that space. It took them six months to get a full call back and we got them in there about a week and a half. So, this is the advocacy that you guys have really indirectly created. Is we are innovators and that means we have to be bold about making decisions, we have to take risks. And we have to use, you know, evidence to make sure that we have the data to make sure that we can back that with our donors and patrons because we don't rely on the tax base as much as we love those incentives. And you never know, one day we might come to you and say, hey, we need some help again. And this is why, and that's why we want to keep dialogue going forward. We do good things in the community, you see what we've done with Zoll. Literally in three months, we solved that, we solved a big part of that problem. And we brought our partners to bear with it. And, and that was a, something that, you know, bypasses all of the, well, if you did this, or just wait for that, or, you know what? We just don't wait for things. We get business done at the foundation level. And we want to be known for, for, for that kind of innovation, not without respect for protocol, but a respect for the healthy tension that is, that is healthcare in this province. So, we want to do the right things for the right people. We feel like we're guardians and stewards of that space. And this is just a massive example of how this community of communities is going to benefit from us taking risks and bringing in new partners. And, and, you know, so the federal guy, Cal, very enamored with what we were doing, knows Dr. Martin Pell, knows this PhD at Lethbridge, and now we've got, U of L wants to play with us. Now, they want to, oh, well, you got a living lab, well, we'd like a living lab, well, do you think? So, now we've got Nate phoning us going, oh, we've got a community training module we'd like to talk about. So, all of a sudden, now we've planted a seed and the tree's growing. Now, now it's like, okay, I hope you like the tree. Because, you know, it's going to continue to grow and, and live long and prosper in an environment that is conducive to making trees grow. We want a great, healthy tree and, am I 20 minutes off?
I get you're way past your five minutes.
You didn't warn me, so I just kept going. I just think that's valuable information. You guys are gracious enough to come on the 16th, thank you so much. I want you to know that this lab project is real and it will happen now. It was in the capital plan in 2018, somebody tried to mothball it out of it, but it went to tender twice. So, to me, that's got to be in somebody's capital plan. And so, we can't ignore it, it's in the Health Rehabilitation Numbers somewhere. And we're going to launch this, this ticket right away. Now, that's fully funded by the province, okay? So, we're going to get into a discussion long term about what's left over from, from the devastation of building that building and what money we owe. And that's going to be a continuing saga, yeah, it's called a saga. But it's all good, right? And I just wanted to come here and celebrate tonight. And again, thank you, keep you in the loop and endure any questions that you may have on some of this proposition. Here's one thing to think about in the future though, and we're going to beat the trees on this one, is we need places for these people to stay. This is going to be an issue. And just want to be progressive about cracking open housing, thinking about federal monies for that. Cal's going to bring us a my tax grant, which is going to help us house this doctoral student to grant. Don't have to pay it back, it's new. This is, this is the reason that we want tentacles into the federal government too. Because once we start doing things that are unconventional, first one-offs, you get the attention of people. you get the attention of people and it's a wonderful thing. But someday we're going to have to have the ability to say no and pump the brakes, but now is not the day.
Scott, you said that, basically, you started with you guys are in control, but I've heard federal, probably provincial universities. Do you have any fear of losing control? Once you get all this big money in there.
Well, if we had the fear of losing control, we should have lost it in 2012.
Okay, well, that's my question.
I think the fear is that, you know, we want, we want control. There's no fear of losing control because I think that facility is the community's. As much as HHS wants to put their brand on it, we are not, oh, by the way, I just want to be specific to this and get this recorded, we are not HHS. We are the Vulcan County Health and Wellness Foundation. We are a distinct and separate entity. And we do not answer to those people, we collaborate with them, and it's to our best interests to do so. And this is something, because we're housed in the same building now, we get painted with the brush that, oh, well, you're just HHS, we don't want to do it. No, we have one paid employee, she's sitting over there.
They also are the only independent foundation that's not basically tied in with HHS in Alberta.
So in some cases, their management is paid by HHS, we are not one of those. So we want to maintain autonomy and independence to your, and we feel like we have a voice. And when we can be transparent about what we do in front of the general public and our donors and our patrons and our municipal governments, we have every confidence that we will maintain, you know, our focus and our strategic direction to bring more back to this community. And in doing so, we increase our advocacy and our ability to speak to it. Oh, by the way, Joe Shaw was in your, pre-election was in your chambers. I wasn't able to be here that night, I sent my emissary. And we have since sent him a letter that was posted pre-election, I believe, a week pre, two, two weeks pre-election. We have heard nothing from him. So I assume he is busy becoming a tourism minister and forgotten all about us. Just so you know, we have not received anything back from our MOLI, as much as we would like to.
Doesn't seem to be the best of minds to some people.
I approached him on a matter, it took a week and a half, but I went through his office.
And you know what, just a parting pitch, I know this is ancient history, but I'm telling you, we're living it through health. And health was a pillar in this brand plan. We're using technology in the theater of Star Trek, created the Leonard Nimoy Wellness Academy, which you can go online and have a look at, fantastic partnership with the Nimoy family in mining not only COPD stuff out of there, but lung health post-COVID and spreading the news via the information that we've mined out of, really, the labyrinth that is HHS, here, trying to get through the website. So we've simplified it and easy to access, and, you know, health's a pillar in that plan. And we need to make sure, using technology, look what's happening. We're doing exactly what it was laid out in front of us. So I just want to celebrate that and thank you for an opportunity to speak to you. Any questions, any?
Any other questions?
Scott.
Thank you.
You know, that's a lot. So I'll leave you guys two more copies and that's it. I'll let you know when we win the grant in September, okay? Thank you, Martin, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, guys.
And you guys are welcome to stay for the rest of the week if you'd like.
Really, no, it's just not enough candy.
I have a grandfather who I got to go with.
Okay.
Thank you, guys, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, well, moving on, that takes up both those two under the delegation spots, spoke about that tele rehab, two-point zero, so. Is there any other, any questions on any of those? If not, we'll move on to the correspondence, South Gore Economic Development. So you have their 2023 goals and these. Any questions on any of that one at all? Okay, thank you, moving on to Mayors and Reeves. So if you look at the date on that one of the minutes, it was a year ago because they only have two meetings a year.
This was just Martin Shield's presentation.
Oh, this one's Martin's, I apologize, I apologize.
This is just Martin's update to the mayor's.
I'm sorry, you're right. Yeah, and Martin, we ran into him at the, on the sixteenth, and he says, yeah, he says he wasn't going to the Mayors and Reeves because he was going to participate in the Gulf tournament. So, and he also brought some funding for some of the events that were going on in that weekend, so. Okay, any questions on Martin's? Okay, now we'll move on to the Marcus Foundation. I guess it comes from Vulcan County, really. So the ones that were able to attend the meeting down at the county that talked about a one-time funding method to the Marcus Foundation for this capital project. And the county heard from some of the communities saying there were some financial difficulties, so they came up with it, things, Judy wanted to talk about?
No, just one community that I know.
Yeah, no, I.
Yeah. There's, I don't, there's, I don't think we've got a response from another one either yet.
Go ahead.
So for this, as the council's discussed, we do have funds in reserve for this that can be accessed. So taking a loan would make sense on that side. But we can send a letter back thanking them for the offer to.
I think that would be more than appropriate, you know, to send back to the county saying, thank you very much for this gesture of kindness that we've offered to all the municipalities. And, you know, the word sort of, you know, takes in us too, but, you know, at this time, we don't feel the need to participate in the funding process. But that, you know, goes back to them and they realize that, you know, we're back in the program, but we're, and appreciate the ability that they have to help out where they can, so. Okay, any other thoughts or questions on the county one? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the community futures. Again, that's just their information items.
They have their new executive and the member that, last member the council appointed to their board, and it's on their new executive, so that's nice when you have somebody vocal.
Okay, thank you, any other questions? Okay, now we move on to the Old Man River Regional Services. Kim and I had a bit of a discussion, he just, you know, it was quite often, there's so many. Last time that we had one was when it was on the campgrounds. And so this one here was some more information on other things around our community. So he just put it in there too, so everybody got a chance to read it if you didn't have a chance to read it.
Put it in for those that don't receive the Ours regular emails.
So it was kind of interesting.
It was very interesting, actually, he talked about it at the, at the meeting there. And he brought up some very interesting points about, well, food trucks that, you know, all of a sudden they're there and, you know, they got, they're not paying tax, they're not, they're just sitting there selling. And he was talking about time-wise, he was talking about, you know, things that a community might look at, municipalities might look at, trying to limit that for time. Because if they're going to sit there in a prime location, and you can see, they mentioned a lot in Nanton, you know, and they're bringing in income, but they're not really paying out much. And it becomes really, you know, the restaurants that are in town, for example, that are paying taxes and then they're paying water, so you're, you know, they're taking business away from them. So I found it quite interesting, actually, this was very well done.
Judy, yeah?
Yeah, basically about the businesses too, but I was wondering, do the food trucks get temporary permits?
Business licenses, but they, we don't, they have to have permission from the owner to be on their property. I believe the one that has been operating lately has permission.
Okay, any other thoughts or questions on that one? Go ahead, Judy.
Just the one with the garage sales, you have four-day hour limit, some of them are three days, but we don't really, we don't pay attention to them.
We follow, we, in our bylaw, we are only allowed out three a year. So we follow that a lot more closely than the amount of days they are.
So the one that was the never-ending garage sale was.
Gets a visit from the bylaw enforcement officer.
Thank you.
Yeah, and unfortunately, you know, I mean, garage sales are deep and, you know, like, there is even some communities that tried even the other one where, you know, one day out of the year, or two days out of the year, they'll have a, you can keep a community, one where you put stuff out for free, and then the next day you have to take it away. And one community found that it was very, very successful. But now it's become, some people take advantage of that and do it again on a weekly basis. And all it is, you know, moving their garbage from the back alley to the front street. And, you know, it's okay, you know, most people don't mind it once in a while, but all of a sudden the neighbors start to say this is becoming a bit of a problem, so. But anyway, it's different ideas from different communities, so I really appreciate what Ours did on this one, so. Any other thoughts on this one? Okay, now we'll move on to the letter from, letter from Mr. McGyver. He's had this portfolio, I think, three times now, I think, at least twice anyway.
Twice, I'm sorry.
So, that one thing about him, you know, anybody that's been to AUMA conference or AM conference, you know, he does speak his mind, he says what he thinks, and he's willing to get beat up over it too. And so I think he'll be a great asset to us on this one. Any questions on that letter? Okay, and then the last one is on the ATV AFC2023 sponsorship request. And it's kind of a strange one, but I'm hoping you'll have an opportunity to read over it to.
So I think if we were going to make a donation, it's either one hundred or three hundred, one. Just number, it's either first of order or two of order.
Right, and it seems all we do, all are fire through the Vulcan County. This request coming to, it came to, as you can see in the email, the towns and villages. And we don't, on the administration side, we don't generally sponsor things. We bring that to council if you're interested in this site and outside. This is a conference that's being held in Lethbridge for fire that'll be due through the Vulcan County. So that, I gathered that information, it came from JEN, which is Vulcan Fire, so that's why it came the way that it did. Because if it would have came strictly from a conference.
Yeah.
It's a conference in another community.
Yeah, a little bit confusing.
Yeah.
Cause we have, I think they're both, or in another one, the executive for the fire trade conference.
Right, so this is specifically sponsoring a conference in Lethbridge. Whether it comes out to be that or not.
Okay.
That's why I put it as correspondence, because if you don't want to, you receive it for information. If you want to, you just make a motion to diswant it.
Okay, any thoughts?
Doesn't directly impact our actual station here, does it?
The members would attend the conference.
Potentially, they might.
They could.
Yeah.
In past years, we've had some members that have attended this conference. I don't know whether, how long ago it's been, but again, because it's an arm-length away from us.
Every year, they.
Could be, we don't see it because it doesn't come from us, you know? Yeah, go ahead, Cole.
I think there's other causes that I would prefer to donate it or not at all, to be honest, so that's where I'm at with it.
Okay, any other thoughts on it? Okay, somebody wish to move the correspondence, file for permission, Barbara? Any discussion on Barbara's motion? Those in favor? Posed, it's carried down to the state. Okay, moving on to cash reports.
Well, as you can see, we haven't had a whole bunch of movement. We do have, this is for the end of May. So we're just going to start seeing larger cash flow come in for the taxation side through June. But again, we have quite a few on tip, so we see a steady income from the tax throughout the year. So a big thing to keep in mind is where we're at, the two-point-nine, which includes the two-point-five we have in reserve and then four to five hundred that we keep in the bank for end of.
Okay, any, Cole, or, sorry. Can you just refresh my memory what LSH stands for?
That's the new accounts, that's our general banking account. Or, sorry, no, the investment, that is the.
Municipals.
Yeah. It's our savings side of things where there are reserves.
Okay.
And then the others are on the notice on man that we pull the money out of without, as needed, except for flags.
Okay, any thoughts?
Make the motion to accept the cash statement, carrying down three firsts.
Okay, now we lose the cash statement, any question on Laura's motion? Maybe not, I'll call questions in favor. Posed, it's carried down to state. Okay, moving on to the year that, date.
And this is for May thirty-first. You will see the revenue side went up significantly. That's because we moved all of the taxes into a liability that will be money coming in, so. That was the biggest change as far as the expense side. If you look at the entire year, we're in pretty decent shape for the five months, looking on our average of about five-hundred-and-fifty thousand a month for our expenses. This month, we'll see most of our contributions to library, archives, airport. All of that stuff gets done either at the end of May, beginning of June. So majority of those funds will come out, so that will steady out. Anything that was standing out, unless there's questions on individual lines. What happens, where we should be for this time of year.
Okay, any questions? Not, somebody wish to move? Okay, Cole? Any discussion on Cole's motion? Hearing none, I'll call questions in favor. Posed, hearing none, it's carried down to state. Okay, moving on to current business. There is the arena dressing room expansion request. And everybody remembers the discussion that's been around the table for a while?
So really all we're asking is if this is something the council wants to move forward with, based on the feedback that we got from the upcoming hockey team, those sort of things. Kind of spurred that conversation even further. So really, we're not asking for any money here or anything at this time. We're asking for, is this something the council wants us to move forward with? And if it is, we'll formally start spending time and budget of our own to create a cost estimate for you, whether we should be getting engineering, whether we can share resources for engineering, those sort of things.
I think my personal opinion on this is I believe that the dressing rooms are desperately needed, number one. But number two, I think that we should be waiting for our next fiscal year prior to jumping into this. That's my personal opinion. And so we can also have the possible conversations with the county on how much they're willing to put into getting started and then getting the engineering and SEMA, whoever needs to be involved, and find out what they would like to do as well. Because it's got to be a partnership. So I feel like we shouldn't wait on this. That's my personal opinion, because I think we're at our limit for this year we're spending, I think.
Okay, Richard?
That's a, that's a good point. The county puts, what, forty-five thousand away for capital cost projects, right? So we're, at this point, we just want to. Um, so, we're, at this point, we just wanna go ahead and see what it's gonna bring up some engineering costs and see what it would cost to do this. It need, we need to do these, I agree with you a hundred percent, this has to be done, and, um, I'm kind of curious to see if we can utilize some of that, uh, capital cost project here, and, is that just for a project, or can we use that, utilize some of that money that they have for engineering costs?
And, and this is just to open up the conversation, this is for us to reach out and start asking those questions. It's not worth asking those questions if council isn't on board with moving forward.
Yeah.
If it's not moving in forward till next year, we're not gonna spend any time doing it.
Yeah.
If this is, we need to have, start working at this right away, we wanna have everything done upfront well, so that when we do sit down, because this is going to include multiple partners, the
Yeah.
team itself has expressed interest in participating in this as well, now, if there's going to be dressing rooms built, they would like to fund portions of them, so before everybody starts jumping the gun and gets a
Yeah.
project started that is over the scope, we wanted to start, get council's permission to start looking and putting a plan together on how we're gonna move this forward. It's, uh, there is no budget money being asked for other, other than our operation budgets that we're using right now, but we may come back to council for, say, draft plans or, or getting some, uh, short engineering, but that would be when all the partners are on board with that, and it would be going up for reserve to do that.
Okay, do you have?
I think we need cost estimates to present to the county and to the Vulcan Rampage, because if we go and say, but we don't know how much it costs, I think we need those costs to get their buy-in, if we don't get their buy-in, then then we know it's dead in the water for a while, but I think we need to know the numbers before we.
Cole?
Um, how much would, would engineering for a project like this typically run?
We don't know, if it's built, if it's built in the dressing room on the side of the building, it can be fifteen percent of the project, so if you say the project is half a million dollars, you know, you're looking at fifty or sixty thousand, if you're looking at a million dollar expansion, now it's a hundred and twenty thousand.
I think my fear would be to, um, if we grew up engineering plans for, say, Plan A, and our partners maybe aren't in agreeance with that plan and want it for Plan B or a different area, I'm kind of like with Barb, I think we kind of need to have maybe especially the county on board with what is Plan A, and what is Plan B, what are the possibilities?
But, but I think what can we.
We don't have a plan here, we, yeah, we need Yalto to decide, do you want a plan?
Do we, do we want to go with a Plan A or B or C, or do we want the, our administrations to spend time and effort going out there and, like, talking to the user groups, or do we wanna wait until all of a sudden a user group comes back to us and say, we have this napkin pad, and we've already gone out and got pricing on it. And, and fundraised for it, and then the council looks like a stick in their backside and, and mud on our face, because we haven't even discussed whether we want to do this project, and so, I mean, this, up until this year, it's only been a flying ointment, but then it was next.
Um, I think that because we're not saying, go spend a bunch of money, we're saying, spend some time on this, talk to everyone like, uh, Tom was saying, I think it's something that we should, we should make the recommendation for, um, who knows, it could take our staff six, or Kim's staff, six months to do this number into the next fiscal year already, or almost, right? So, I think you're right, that we are pretty close to what we should be spending, but I think it's a good idea for us to start having this conversation.
Um, I'm not adverse to having a conversation with the county prior to you guys spending a lot of time on it. My worry is the fact that, like, going through our reserves, like, for the arena upgrades, we only have twenty-eight thousand dollars, and then for the capital one, which is supposed to be, I guess, like, emergency repairs, that's the one where we have the ninety-one thousand dollars. And I just like, because we have dipped into reserves for recreation already, that's where I'm hesitant, because I think reserves are important, especially if we are going to be doing a big project like dressing rooms, but maybe we could do, at least get a conversation prior to, and maybe before you jump in and ask the engineers, we could get like a pricing and talk about the pricing for the engineering.
And I guess, what I'm getting at is, we can't do anything without a plan, we don't even, we don't even have a
Napkin.
We don't even have a, a scuff mark in the dirt, like, we'd like to put it here, and that's what we're really struggling with. Everybody has said they want dressing rooms, but nobody has said, put it on this side of the building or put it on this side, and we want to make sure that if this is going to, because somebody's gonna start pushing it, whether it be minor hockey, whether it be the Rampage, whether it be the, you know, the county, you know, as a, as a partner from the, getting the same letters that we got, somebody, and, and it's our building, so we need to take the lead on the plan, so we need to be able to bring something back to you guys to council, that we can take to the county to the, and say, here's three different options, here's what we feel is the best option, would you like it to explore, and that's when you get the engineers involved. Basically, we're gonna get as much work done as we can, so that we can show you those napkin drawings, and then say, is this something that we should engineer, and if we're going to engineer it, it's gonna be X amount of dollars, then it's asking our partners to participate in that. So, this is a preliminary, do you wanna spend any time on it, because it's already chewing up budget time. We are already having meetings on site, we're getting the letters, we're, we're already spending the time, but without council's direction, we got to the point now, people are starting, well, the Rampage, we want to do this, we wanna give you money. We need council to tell us to go ahead with this, that is, is really where we're at.
Can you throw a question?
Uh, I, I agree with, well, it's being said around here, I think we've gotta start somewhere, and when we go to the county, I, I get triggered feelings when I hear a plan, county, because all I can think of is, what's your plan? What's your plan? And that irks me every time I hear those words, so when we go to a partner, wanna go there with a plan, and, you know, be, you know, be a step ahead of your game before someone comes into something.
Well, and, sorry, just a second before, um, I think you're right, but I think what's happened in the past is groups have come to us and they already have done all the planning on our facilities, and then they kind of put us in a bad spot, where we, we have to either accept, um, that the project is a go or it isn't, and then we are the ones that get the butt on our face, because, you know, one group has gone, talked to somebody else, and then it's gone, or one third, one third, one third, and it turns out to be that that's not the way it's ever going to be, you know, and, uh, it's gonna be two thirds by us and one third by the other four or five groups, and that's the way it's always going to be, so I, I think that, you know, we need to get one step ahead of it, but Barb, you had a.
Um, the other thing I think that we also need to think about is the Rampage, um, they've only signed saying they're gonna be here for one year so far, and that was like in the meeting, and we did at that meeting say that we were going to go slowly on dressing rooms, if I recall correctly.
Well, I think that was a call made by somebody other than counselors, but I, this council, but.
Oh, okay, I thought it was one of our council members that, um.
They were going to move temporaries instead of, uh, trying to renovate something.
Okay, but, um, with that said, I'm not saying we shouldn't start the conversation, I'm just worried about, um, putting money from this year's budget rather than actually budgeting it in for possibly, like, doing the engineering in, like, say, January, or when our budget is.
It's just cost estimates, though.
Yeah.
This is.
Try to make a plan.
Yeah, go ahead.
We're not, we're not gonna put any time, we can't put staff time to it if it's not something we're moving forward with, whether it be tomorrow or next year, we have to.
Our, um, dressing rooms are, just like you said, Barb, are entirely need to repair, um, even if the Rampage leaves, it's not a bad idea to have even a shelf-ready response to some future problems, you know, and it might be worth spending some money in the future, but to go now, I would say, I think it's, they can't, Kim can't come and start spending money till we give them the okay, so, but he's just asking for that first step, and I, I have no problem with that first step, I don't think.
Cole?
Um, to me, the Rampage, the only relevance they have to me is, um, if it's more affordable for us for our plan, because if they wanna put money into their own locker room, that doesn't benefit our community whatsoever.
Yeah.
Unless they leave and we take it over, we're still not gonna have access to it.
Right.
So it doesn't really solve our problem.
Yeah.
But, it's, I'm still, would be very grateful if you did, but, um, we look at it as an additional revenue to the overall structure.
Yeah.
What does the structure look like now? Now it's not just a girl's dressing room we're building, it's a possibly a bigger facility, so we needed to talk about the overall.
Yeah, Judy?
Yeah, and, yeah, but we need the girls' dressing room, no matter, no matter what, we need that, but this just says to bring back cost estimates, we're not spending money, we're telling staff, can you please go ahead and, and get a few plans and see, you know, which part of the building that we can use, what to make a proposal to take, but right now we have nothing, right?
And I think that's what, the, the advantage of what's happening now is, we've learned from experiences that we've had in the past on some other projects, where, um, the cart was built and designed and, um,
Set down the path.
Set down the path before the horse was even thought about buying that loan, so I, I think that this is, gives an opportunity for us to give direction to administration, to go out there and do some of their time and efforts and and go back to some of these groups, um, you know, so some of these have been spurred by some of the information that's been out there, some of it's been spurred by, you know, you know, members of our own council that have heard some of the concerns from the ratepayers of our community and the users of the facilities, and, and I think that this gives us a leg up, and then once we got an idea where we, knowing where we're going to go, then Barb's right, we start allocating funds towards it, right, and all we're doing is allocating, giving permission to administration to allocate resources towards it.
I think, uh, it's an important first step to take, and I'd like to make the recommendation that council and ex-administration to further explore options for a dressing room expansion at the Vulcan District Arena, and to bring back cost estimates for engineering and a detailed development plan for this project.
Okay, thank you, Will. Any more discussion on Will's motion? Judy?
I just, um, it's also the Vulcan skating club, like, the letters, I mean, they need, they need the rooms and, and the rooms aren't there for them, so I, I, I support your recommendation.
Okay, any other thoughts, questions? If not, we'll call the questions, those are favor. Posed, seeing none, declared as carried. Thank you, moving on to the industrial land purchase agreement.
So everybody's had a chance to read this report, uh, I just wanted to clarify, because Lyle actually came in and, and chatted with me today, just make sure that the rest of the council is aware of this, this is not meant to replace the real estate, uh, purchase agreement, this is meant to, at the end of it, be a condition of the purchase agreement, so this one really just address the things that council had talked about that aren't in a regular commercial development agreement, or, uh, purchase agreement, and those are things like, uh, having a development agreement, uh, within, in place within a year of, uh, the sale, and then, uh, to be started construction within a year of, uh, of the development agreement being signed. From that, we also, uh, based on the conversation we had with council and, uh, with North and Company, uh, something that, uh, had been done in another community is, if we get the land back, we get it back at eighty-five percent of the cost, and the reason why we only return eighty-five percent of it is because then we will use the other, uh, to pay the real estate and the rental fees to do the land transfer back, so we're not really the end of the day, we would get the land back and break even, I guess.
You've got two years, basically, to get a, to start building.
To have a shovel in the ground, yeah. So, we will use this, if council is in favor of that, we will use this template as a condition of any offer that, uh, Lyle would sign very important, or any other realtor, sorry.
First, sorry, then Judy?
Do you think this would affect, um, whether someone is gonna buy a lawn or not, this, or these conditions?
Yep. Yeah, I've had people, uh, inquire about it, but I think it's a good thing.
Yeah.
Because otherwise we get people coming and seeing the price of a lot, and they wanna buy it and just put a lot of it.
Yeah.
For the tumbleweed to circulate.
What you're allowing to do this, right?
Yes, exactly, and, and we've got people who are, you know, appreciate this as well, and that are quite interested, because we have something like this, so that we're not, we're being proactive
Yeah.
and not just gonna sit there and let the tumblebeads go by.
Judy, yeah?
Okay, for seven D and E, like, the seller shall be entitled to register a vendor's caveat identifying its interest. Um, then on E, the buyer shall be entitled to request that the seller propose the above vendor's caveat for financing purposes, so that's just until they get a loan, and then we can put the caveat on?
Yeah, so, so if, uh, someone is flush with cash and doesn't need to do very much to get started on their development, we could register the caveat immediately after signing. If somebody is using that to, and needs to leverage funds through a financial institution, we don't wanna have the caveat that builds the land until they actually get financing, so we would work with them, we put that condition in there, so that if they say, hey, I need to get financing secured before I can build, we would register the caveat.
And go after the financing.
Or they went in default of the agreement.
They'd go, sorry, they'd go alone on that.
Cause some loans secured on the equity of the land, right? That was something that, uh, North and Company had ran into before. Is the caveat, the caveat being registered impacted their ability to borrow against them?
Yeah, but if, once they get the loan, and, uh,
Then you.
Then we've got the caveat on, and then we're good, we call it in, we have to pay off the loan, like, how does that?
No, no, the caveat goes on the land, and the town has the right to take it back if they need to, but, like, so their loan is still in, that's a, that's contract between the purchase and the financial institution.
But the, but the bank has the, the land?
No, we, no, we put the caveat on.
I know we put the caveat on, but they're using the land as collateral.
As collateral.
Yeah, so then the, the banks got their loan on there, and then we take it back, that loan is still sitting on that property. I'm just wondering how the loan gets to go.
It would be.
Well, I think, because when you're purchasing a commercial property, you've gotta put thirty or thirty-five percent down, so if they buy it, the town buys it back at eighty-five percent, that pays out that loan. Correct?
Yeah.
I haven't looked into that.
Because the proceeds technically go back to the.
Go back to.
To the buyer.
To the buyer, or to the lien, or whoever's got the lien.
Yeah.
Cause one's a lien, one's a caveat.
Right.
Yeah.
So you can buy a piece of property that's got a caveat on it, and, and then you, the bank, that makes no difference what the bank does to the caveat stays with that property forever.
So does that loan invest this?
Uh, the loan would be.
No, until the loan's paid off, but even though, once the loan's paid off, that caveat still stays there.
I know, but if they get defaulted within two years, the loan wouldn't be paid off, would it?
Um, but that's between the landowner, the land purchaser, or the, and the bank institution.
Lender.
You know, we're gonna take property.
Like, it's a good point, no?
But, but again, when we take it back, we give, we, we buy it back, because they paid for it, but we only give them eighty-five percent of what
Oh, and that G's the loan, I was going the other way, sorry.
Yes.
That makes sense, so thank you.
The money that we're holding to take it back pays out.
It's been a long year, I.
Pays out on the equity side.
So, but yeah, if we, if we sell it for a hundred dollars, or a hundred thousand dollars, or whatever, you know, easy one, a hundred dollars, and within the two years, they don't fulfill it, we take it back from them, so we give them eighty-five dollars. But the bank has a lien against that piece of property, so they will.
So they take that money back.
They take the money and pay a bank, and like Lyle says.
I reversed the numbers.
If the thirty-five percent is one.
I thought fifteen percent, eight would cover that.
Yeah.
No, 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 we're giving, we're giving the buyer eighty-five percent of their money, and the first thing that the financial institution will go against that money to pay whatever is in default to them.
Yeah, thank you.
So all this is really doing is, is allowing us to. So all this is really doing is, is allowing us to put some teeth in the ability to say, you have two years to put a shovel in the ground and start your process and, um, building.
We used a very similar purchase agreement. There wasn't a dollar figure, uh, because we gave that the land for a dollar, but we did this with a previous owner, and they defaulted, we got the land back. So the transfer of land went fairly simply, it was a longer period, but, uh, that portion of it was successful by having them at the time of sale, signing that document that we can revert back.
And then I think Lyle's got a point toward that question about, you know, how, will this or could this affect? It definitely will.
Yes.
It'll, it'll affect the tire kickers, it'll affect the ones that are figured that they can buy something for nothing, and then turn around and sell it and make a good dollar on it and have no intentions of ever developing it, so.
I agree with you, Tom, that speculators are speculators, but one thing, if you have people building a building on there and they're developing their business in there, they don't wanna see a vacant lot, they wanna see somebody come in there, build, because it adds work to their business as well. So I, I, I'm totally in favor of this.
I think it's a, it's as close to a win-win that we can get, because, you know, I mean, North and Company and, and administration, you know, with the help of our realtors, um, have worked on this. And again, it's not gonna be a perfect document, but it's closer than what we had in the past.
And, and I guess we need to be very clear, this is the template that we're starting with. I'm guessing people will ask for different amendments when they're looking at it.
Yeah.
The template, once approved, if everyone says, yeah, no, it's fine, and they sign it, I don't have to bring it back to council. If they wanna amend it, I gotta bring it back to council.
Yeah, or again, you know, when they meet with the realtor, and the realtor, you know, they come up with some different ones, there's still going to be an opportunity for them to come back and say, you know, clause B or C is your chance that we can amend it or change it or alter it, and then again, Colt.
Uh, I guess I'd like to make a motion that council approve the industrial land purchase and sale contract template as presented.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments or questions? If not, we'll call the questions in those in favor. Opposed, seen none, it's carried unanimously. Okay, thank you, and moving on to liquor license for home games for Rampage.
So everybody's had a chance to read the report. This is not the town getting a liquor license for the facility, this is the town giving permission for them to get their own liquor license into our facility.
Um, I just have one question. Um, did they have any conversations with the company, uh, Ray Flunch about collaborating or?
I'm not sure at this point if they've talked to their executive.
They, they, even if they do, they still will have to, if they wanna be able to use another facility with, attached to our facility to sell the liquor, but they can take that liquor into our facility, we still need to give them permission to apply for this.
Have the license.
For this license, so, you know, um, it's, and it's not any different than what we've done with lots of different areas in our community that we've given.
So, um, with liquor, um, I know when we were doing the rodeo, I mean, I had the boys show up a few times and say, you know, what do you serve for food? You just mentioned not our facility, um, I mean, everybody pulls food off that side, but that's not our facility, does that make any difference legality-wise? Because the food's on this side and this is over here.
You just have to have access to it.
Okay.
So if it's, if it's not sandwiches from the concession, every, every event is something different, whether it's bringing in sandwiches, whether it's potato chips, you know, things. And this is why it's very, very specific in the, uh, in the, uh, recommendation by for an AGLC liquor license, so they have to follow AGLC's rules on having a facility, really.
I'll make the recommendation that council, council approves a Vulcan Rampage request to allow the team to apply for an AGLC for liquor license at Vulcan District Arena for liquor sales at during their home game weekends.
Any questions on, or comments?
I'm torn on this one, actually, I'm, I'm really torn on it.
I, if, if Judy's, uh, open to a friendly amendment, we'll correct the wording in there a little bit, so that.
I realize that one is written, aftering.
Yes, aftering is not a proper statement. Or for an ALGC liquor license.
Okay, so there'll be a little bit of wording change there, but it doesn't change the intent of what the motion was, I would think. Is that okay for you, Judy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any more feedback?
Uh, no, I just asked any, any more questions from anybody else? Okay, if not, call the questions in those in favor. Opposed, okay, we've got one fo- or two opposed, two opposed and five in favor, so it's carried. Okay, moving on to community sports courts.
This is right.
Yes, so, everybody's had a chance to try to, I tried to put in as much information as I could. It's very straightforward, SEMA's recommendation is to re-tender. The reason being is we only got two, you saw the prices on both of them, uh, very, both of them are larger construction companies. And when, so SEMA, after it concluded, they were fairly surprised as well, and so they started following, uh, a lot of the groups that they anticipated were going to, put in a tender and ask, you know, how come you didn't participate, or how come we didn't see anything from you? And the majority of the answers they got are, we've got a full year's worth of work, there's no way we can put it in, we're having trouble finding guys, all, all of those different things, so they didn't even put in a tender. So, since getting that pricing and the review, obviously it's well outside the scope, uh, of the, uh, budget that we have. So what we would like to talk to council about is, is your opinion on, uh, just re-looking at the, at the contracts, seeing if we can find some efficiencies in there based on, on some of the numbers that we saw from the two that, uh, that we had, and then looking at re-tendering in, uh, November, December, when everybody's slow and they're putting their next year's work schedule together, then it becomes a lot more attractive to start a project out in Vulcan rather than trying to get out here in the middle of the year to finish something up. And, uh, so it's two-part, uh, really, not awarding at this time, you have to actually make an official non-award and, uh, then the redirect administration.
Cole.
Um, just a question, I guess, um, if we do re-tender it, say next November, how will that affect, um, I guess, the entity that has donated the money or our, or our grants?
Yes, so the grant, the grant is good until twenty-twenty-five, and Chris reached, uh, out to the project donor today and said that, uh, based on the numbers that, uh, we shared with him, that he's perfectly fine. And he was actually talking to another group that he had, uh, worked with in another community to ask why they didn't tender as well, it sounded like it was the same thing, that they were too busy.
So the, the two-part, um, motion will diff- remove the tendering and also defer the process to the, or the screen. Richard?
I'll make the motion, uh, that town, that council directs SEMA and to notify all bidders that due to budget constraints, that the town will not be awarding the tender at this time, and directs administration to view the project's scope and to re-tender the community sports court project following the twenty-twenty-three construction season.
Okay, any question on Richard's motion? Here is none, I'll call the questions in favor. It's carried unanimously. Thank you, moving on to community reports, so we have six of them here, written ones. Starting off with, well, I guess it was really more than six, it was eight, no, maybe ten, I guess it is. Anyway, moving on to the original response for Alderby's, the May tenth, um, combined meeting. Any questions? I know Barbara's gone over all of this in her reports, but any questions on any of that one? If not, same with the June fourteenth one, combined meeting. Any questions or anything on that one? Okay, I'll just, well. For Gabby's, or Gabrielle's reports, for cases in section seven. Three cases in Clara's home and.
There was one case in Vulcan. I know she's got a key there, but there was one case.
One case, okay.
Yeah, and I'm for, I'm just gonna say unfortunately during the month of June, one of the cases, I won't say which community, actually resulted in a death, because of the most obvious, which is very sad.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, not, we move on to FCSA AGM. June fifteenth, any questions? Not, dropped many minutes of that meeting on that day. Okay, no questions for either one? Okay, moving on to the Food Bank, any questions on the Food Bank one? Again, AGM dropped minutes. Not the Food Bank meeting minutes for the same day, the fifteenth.
I did one question, if any news on that tower, the coast tower, like, has it?
Have to wait for the power to get done first, and they were waiting for parts.
Waiting for parts, in that role model, thank you.
They, they, everything's ordered, he was hoping that, uh, within the next two weeks, they would have everything.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Uh, okay, moving on to the Flying Club, June twentieth meeting. Okay, hearing none, then June twentieth Golf Club. Mark's. Oh, I hope so, I'll, uh, Jeff, there's sort of three on the twentieth opening golf club. Okay. Marcus Foundation, yes.
Just a point, uh, with your, with your design when you were talking about, I just sold clients a line of house, and they're moving into Peter Dawson. One's in one part of the building, and the other's in the, on the other side. And I just find that to be very, um, sad or unfortunate. So I'm, I really, it just makes me appreciate more the time that's being taken by the Marcus Foundation to design things the way they do. Because I, I can picture my parents if they were down, it would just devastate.
Yeah, and, um, I think you're right, I think it's nice to see that the Marcus Foundation is trying to do this in a positive, um, direction and, and, um, do it correctly, and, and, you know, I appreciate the, the work that the foundation and their, their group of, uh, has done and, or, or is going towards. It's not, it's not easy when you have, have tight windows to apply for funding, and yet you wanna do everything right, so that you're, but, um, if they get it right and perfect the first time, it'd be, um, great, because they've had an opportunity to go over to other facilities and, and pick up some good, good points from them, so. Any other comments on the Marcus Foundation one design? Thank you, moving on to the Golf Course. Any other question on the Golf Course one? Okay, hearing none, somebody wished to move, but Lyle moves there.
Information.
Community reports for information, any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the questions in favor. And opposed, seen none, it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to council reports, Councilor Magnusson.
I was at the town hall meeting, and we had more than three people, so that was good. And once again, able, uh, as mentioned before, to get more people out, like, if we don't get many people out, does that mean we're doing a super awesome job? Or does that? I find it a little frustrating we didn't get more people, but last year we had something a little more controversial, and it got people out and paid attention, so I, I guess we should give ourselves a pat on the back for doing a good job, because not as many people came out with concerns. And Tom, I thought you did a, you did an okay job with the presentation. Appreciate that. And I did have the airport committee meeting, but unfortunately I was able, unable to make it due to, uh, work. So that's the only two meetings I had during the stretch.
Okay, any questions, Matt? Okay, not, thank you, on to Richard.
Same one as Lyle, the, of the budget meeting. That was about it.
Okay, any questions for Richard? Okay, well, thank you, Councilor Sam.
Couldn't make the town hall meeting because I got a little competitive playing softball, and disappointed I missed the big crowd there, so.
You were asking, weren't you?
Yeah. And that's, we all have to report right now.
Thank you, any questions for Will? Not, Councilor Sanderson.
On June thirteenth, I think as I told you before, we alternate in-person and, and Zoom meetings. So on the thirteenth, we had a meeting with, um, for the senior building committee, with M3, our project manager, JMAA architects, and, um, our building committee at Peter Dawson Lodge. Um, I had asked Tom if he would like to join us, I even asked him, but Kim was unable to, so Tom graciously, um, graciously, uh, joined us for this meeting and had some good input. The main discussion was around the schematic design and timelines that we have for our, um, grant application from the government. Meeting was to be set up, and we did have a meeting with Alberta Transportation, uh, to request access to our property from, um, the Conamara, this is the street, for mainly the purpose for delivery trucks, ambulance, and fire vehicles. But we know that personal vehicles will also be using, if it's there, they're gonna use it, right? So, um, formal announcements were sent to all municipal partners and Vulcan Advocate, and time spent going over the options for, um, we had a bunch of different designs, and we really went over them, and that's where some of Tom's input with appliances and that came in, and so then we picked, picked all the rooms from the regular lodge to the enhanced studio to the one-bedroom and two-bedroom. So, um, it took quite a, um, a bit of time to do that. The site plan, um, depends on whether we get access, so we've got two plans on whether we gotta come through June parole for everything, or if we have access from Conamara. Tom had mentioned that there was an agreement previously with AHS to do sort of a walking path, so there could be, like, scooters and, and walkers and people can, from the senior lodge can walk over to the medical clinic. So we're gonna relook at that and see if AHS still is agreement with us putting up a walking path in there, and we would do that. Cost is tight with the construction budget, um, with the building estimated being at fifty-five thousand square feet. We'll know more once the schematic design is complete, construction manager will also give good feedback on this. Interviews for the construction manager is, starts tomorrow, we'll be leaving Vulcan at six o'clock in the morning. Got our first interview at eight-thirty in downtown Calgary at the M3 building, so, uh, we'll be doing two there, and then we'll have lunch, and then we'll do our regular meeting, because, uh, JMAA will be there, we'll all be there, so we'll do our in-person meeting at, uh, the M3 building. On June fifteenth, um, we just had a quick meeting with county lawyer over some contracts that weren't signed, and everything got resolved immediately, didn't put any time in for that, it was pretty quick to get that figured out. June fifteenth also, I had the, uh, FCSS and Food Bank, AGMs regular meetings, that's, um, was noted on the committee reports. June fourth, had the victim services at Tri Services, um, Barbara Diase, Keen Casino is slated for late, um, twenty-twenty-five. We're gonna keep that date in the hopes that the government will allow us to retain our own victim services in our, in our. We're gonna keep that date in the hopes that the government will allow us to retain our own victim services in our, in our county. The golf tournament donation money start is starting to come in, and Carrie and Laurie have made great strides to get this tournament going on August twenty-sixth. So if anybody wants to participate, support victim services, that would be awesome. Summer meetings, we'll only have one in July, and we always put on an annual barbecue to thank the R C N P and all the advocates. So the directors do that at Virginia Ware Building, or Nettie Ware Building, I guess it is, Virginia. The Virginia Memorial Park. So, and I know that when I did the treasure report, that our money hasn't been received from Solgen yet for this year. And with the interim program manager, I think the document's got sent, and I think she filed it. So I've got them now, and we'll send that off, and hopefully the government will be very receptive to us being late with our, with our late requests. So then we had a closed meeting and adjourned shortly after that. Then on June nineteenth, I was at the town hall meeting, and I was just wondering if we could bring up something, some topic, to get people in, whether it was the sports court, or it was an update, which we did do an update on the senior housing, but it wasn't advertised. And I'm just wondering if that's how we can get people in, is maybe find a topic that people might be interested in, to just a thought for, for next year. June twentieth, the building committee meeting is on the reports. June twentieth in the evening, thank you Karen for getting that on the agenda. I sent this to her today, and I was keen to see it on there, so I don't have to report on it. June twenty-second, we, seniors building committee, the C A Os from the county and town, the Reeve, Tom as the mayor, Doug Hendricks from the Fire Command, and Alberta, three people from the Alberta Transportation, Cory from our architect design team, and Brienne from M three, we're all on Zoom to have a discussion with Alberta Transportation about the potential of us having access to that property off of the Conamara. Our concerns were loaded in a memo style of T I A, which is a study that identifies the need of any improvement and mitigating measures to the adjacent nearby roadway system to maintain a satisfactory level of service and safety up to the roadway network in the vicinity of the proposed development. So we don't have to do a full application, we can just do it through a memo T I A, which Cory has, our architect designer, and Cory's sending a detailed drawing to Alberta Transportation with this memo, and they said we should hear within five working days, so hopefully we'll hear it. We have a construction manager interviews on Friday as well in Calgary. So hopefully by then Cory will have some information, so that would be good news. Today, at one o'clock, we presented the schematic design, and so it's all laid out. So we were able, we had big pictures of the kitchen the way it is now, which is four hundred and eighty-six square meters, and now it's two thousand and one or something square meters. So they were just blown away, and then we had the pictures from the other lodges. So we had cooks in, we had the maintenance man, and we had housekeeping. And we went over everything in their areas, and we had Cory call us when he was free, and they were all able to ask the questions, and were making changes. And he did such a great job, there were minimal changes, there was about ten changes made. So, and then we took the designs up to the residents and showed them the size of the rooms. And some were overwhelmed, and some were, I don't know if I'll be alive to see this. So it's, it's sad to hear what you told us about. And that's what our goal is, to be able to keep families together, husbands and wives together. And so we are working hard, as you can see, to, to get this done. I do want to know if anybody would like to take over the golf course. That would take one meeting off of my plate.
What day of the weekend?
It's Tuesdays.
That's Fire Trans, won't be able to.
Yeah, I know, that's what I was thinking. In the winter, it's Thursdays, but.
That works.
Summers, it's Tuesdays.
How often?
They meet once a month, all year.
Is it always Tuesday, or sometimes?
In the winter, it's Thursday.
Once a month, once a month. Judy, once a month, fine. We gotta.
Who's your alternate?
I, I think it's Will, is the alternate, aren't we?
So you either have to do a formal appointment, or you could have the alternate participate until October, until we read.
So maybe when they go to Thursdays, I can.
Tuesdays are fine if it's once a month.
Okay.
Can you just attend as your alternate? Until we do the reappointments in October, if you're fine enough.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, any else, Judy? Okay, any questions for Judy? No, thank you. Okay, moving on to Councilor. More coffee?
Of course, I had that elder abuse meeting, and the only thing I wanna say about that is that we did do education awareness all throughout Vulcan County. The place that our main coordinator, Gabrielle, has been absolutely amazing. She works at Claire's Home and Vulcan, and we've been doing a lot of collaborating and a lot of different things. So she's a wonderful coordinator. And of course, we have Megan at F C S S here in town. If anybody ever needs any information, they can go see her, and she has everything to do that. And we also collaborated with Agro Health, and even had one of the A H S dietitians come in and do some formal presentations for seniors on eating more protein, and wonderful things like that, too. And then we had our library meeting, and our student, one of our student employees, Chelsea, who's been there for, I think, three years, or maybe four years. She's graduating, so we had a little celebration for her last Wednesday. And of course, the town hall meeting, I think we should have some controversial thing happen, so we have more people come, or, I don't know, the cookies were really good. And you did a great job, Tom. And I have a health and wellness meeting on Wednesday evening this week. And I have seen the actual robotic thing that drives around, and we'll eventually be able to connect you with the specialist. So it is kinda cool when it works, when the Wi-Fi's not working, not so cool. So just saying, and that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, any questions for Berma? If not, thank you, Councilor Dunne.
I attended the town hall, like everybody else, it was not so well attended. So I don't know if it's a good or a bad sign, it could be a little both perhaps. Also had a South Grove meeting that I had to cancel at the last minute on the twenty-second, because the wind went down, and I had to sit on a sprayer, so that was it.
Okay, any questions for Cole? Hearing none, thank you. Me, I went like Judy said, I went to the Marcus Foundation meeting, the first one, or that one. And it was great to hear some of the discussions and see some of the things that are going on. And I appreciate what Lyle says, it's, you know, very disappointing to see how, you know, families are split up and moved around, and but yet compared to some provinces, we're very fortunate that we've got, you know, people that are willing to really work hard and move things forward for those other communities and provinces, are not quite as fortunate as we are. So I know one municipality, just Martha here, that's working on a foundation project that's been working on for five years, and so our, our group has definitely moved the project so much faster and ahead of theirs. So Kim and I met with, I thought it was new owners of Noble Concrete, but I guess they've owned it for a couple of years. But they're anticipating doing some major expansions to the, to the site. We didn't realize, or I didn't realize, that this is one of the few C S A-approved concrete plants in the province. And so it's kind of a feather cap for that facility. And, but they're hoping to do, send more concrete north instead of it coming out of the city. They'll start heading, you know, more over here, so we'll see more truck activity out of the city. So they wanna be proactive and, and, you know, discuss what's going on in the community and how potentially, you know, could. And we also talked about that if they were looking at, you know, expanding to a certain degree, maybe there would be another location for them to move to. And they never, they didn't, they.
They didn't stop the conversation.
You know, they'd carry on. They said that if they did that, they would, what they would do is build up a new plant and then lock all the old ones. But, but again, it was, it was a really good meeting, a really good, quite a good discussion with them. And again, it was more just a, I mean, one guy drove all the way down from Edmonton that morning and, for a meeting, and the other two, you know, came from Calgary, but had come from Edmonton the day before. So they came the night before and stayed overnight in Calgary. I went to a V A P A meeting, and again, it's, it's something similar to our, our budget meeting. It wasn't so very well attended by the members of the V A P A group. They do sit on quite a good chunk of cut funding, and they have get quite a bit of their, they do quite a few different programs for, for the students in high school if they want a bursary. You know, they have quite a large bursary. So being that we have a revolving door on, on principals and senior people in the school system, sometimes it's hard that, you know, the people that should be the pushers and the shovers of some of these aren't there. So V A P A does do usually four bursaries, thousand dollar bursaries. So if anybody's interested, matter of fact, and two of them are funded strictly by the oil companies alone. And C L R is the one that. C N R, yeah, however, whatever. They, they, they do two bursaries, and, you know, thousand dollar bursaries. And very, very interested, and of course, Kelly was there, and she hit them up for a donation to the Marcus Foundation. I was at a S A R executive meeting, and the biggest thing that were happening, going on with them is that the T A C E right now is they're in the middle of commissioning their facility in Australia. So they pulled over people to do the commissioning, so we're kinda sitting on the back burner for it. But they did send out a sixty-page piece of information the other day for us to read over, and then move forward on that project. Scott and Kim and, and, you know, had mentioned about the golf tournament for the A H S announcement. I think all of us were really wait for start date and budget, but I think Scott highlighted the advantages and disadvantages of at least that they publicly now are doing more than they were in the last two go-arounds. But hopefully, if not, I think that I do have our M L A's phone number, and he told me to phone him anytime I wanted to, so I think I will. Plug in is here. That same day, I had three function things on, but we had Mayors and Reeves, and the Mayors and Reeves was this time in Tabor. We have one for the south and one for the east, or west, I should say, right, east and west of south. And once a year, they usually get together and have a joint one. And the only thing that, I shouldn't say the only thing, there was quite a discussion about, about the renewables and how the province, right now, Alberta is one of the few provinces, and one of the only provinces, I should say, and one of the few jurisdictions that doesn't have a post-closure agreement, and what happens with, and what life. And so the M L As that were there, there was four M L As that were there, and all four of them really are pushing for this post-closure agreement to be implemented. And so that you don't get a landowner taking the funds from that piece of property for twenty-five years, and then it's at the end of its life, not paying the taxes for three years, and then giving it back to the municipality to look after, clean up with that piece of property. And that's what they believe is going to happen, something similar to potentially what happened in the other industries that are in the communities that are, have no teeth in them, so. The only other one that was on it was, we, A M, Alberta municipalities have a program where they do financing. So I did mention to Kim, you know, you can put your money in, in one of their bank accounts, and very decent looking, but I'm sure there are strings and problems with that, too. But they, they said that you can get the money back out of it in three days. So if you put in, communities that got money in the bank account instead of investing in the bank at two and a half percent or three percent, you can invest in them at five, five and a half percent, so. So I mentioned to Kim so that he can look into it and see if it's worth even the hassle, because sometimes a hassle does outweighs the benefits. Again, I was at the Marcus Foundation on the road, and also Jason Schneider and I both hit up Darren Davidson. He was there at the Mayors and Reeves and spoke about the project. He only represents twenty percent of the province's roads, and yet in his jurisdiction, they've got thirty-five percent of the provincial funding going to twenty percent of the province's roads.
Which means they need it.
And bridges and stuff, so the main push is on Highway three, or is maybe push. But he was in favor of looking at Alberta Transportation, having a look at this. And I think that we maybe should contemplate, everybody taking a real good look at that five thirty-four, and where the intersection could be, and if you have any concerns or questions, bring it up with Judy, and so that they may have heard it from us. Because I think in our first meeting in July, we probably should send a letter of bitter thank you to Alberta Transportation, or one of, you know, pressure to, to move it forward if we think that it's something we need to move forward on. I attended a pool party for the, for the staff at the hospitals and the healthcare workers. You know, something similar to our, our budget meeting, very poorly attended by, you know, the group. But yet, it's very disappointing that there are so many people out there saying that there's no signs of appreciations for things, and then you put something on, or there's no information out there for things, and then you put something on, and nobody virtually attends. We get the same, you know, three or four that are very interested in what's going on, that's the same with our budget. You know, and I think you're right, Judy, do we, you know, come up with something that's what we think is of any interest, or do we come up with something that potentially is a controversial item and throw it out there and wait for the crap to fall for a while? But it is disappointing, you know, administration and councillors, you know, took time out of their, their week or month and to attend it. And then, you know, to see three previous councillors attend was very disappointing. And, you know, it's, again, so either Lyle's right, we're either doing everything perfect, or else we're doing everything so bad that, you know, we're just not interested in participating in that community.
I feel like there'd be torches and torches there.
Well, yeah, like, I mean, you know, you'd like to not have it quick, not show up, but, you know, on the other hand, it is quite disappointing to see how much work goes into it. But again, you know, there are people that are online right now listening to us and participate that way, and, you know, obviously, they feel that they've been fed with enough information that they either are going to ask questions or, or not. So I think that you've just gotta keep on pushing, and, you know, previous councils have tried different methods, different ways, and I don't know what answer is. I did attend some of the porch fest, I did have a funeral I attended too, but, but porch fest, and it was, it was really great again, you know, to see how, how many groups are. And like I said to Kim earlier, it might not have been well attended, but it was attended. And the other thing that was kinda neat is to see how these people are willing to stand up there and show their talents or, or lack of, whichever way some people felt. But it was really great, it was, it was super to see. And then on Wednesday night, I have a solid waste meeting, so hopefully we'll have a quorum, we'll have a phone around and find people to come up to a meeting around the same issues with solid waste, trying to get a quorum sometimes, as some other groups are. around the same issues with solid waste, trying to get a quorum sometimes as some other groups are. You know, a couple of municipalities, I just don't seem to send their representatives. So that's virtually it for me. Is there any questions for... I, again, I'd really like to thank everybody for that was able to participate in the budget, you know, and show up. And I apologize that there's no, no great groups out there that, you know, came to listen to us. But I did talk to two of the ones at the funeral that already tanned. They were disappointed that they missed it, one forgot and the other one's wife has got help. So if not, you need somebody to move out your calls, partner? Any discussion of Barnes motion? Hearing that, call question, favorite? Thank you. Okay, moving on, we've got a couple items left and then...
So am I. I was gonna try to lead them to... Well, I'll be quick for Will. We brought the action report. As you can see, Karen was good enough to update the stuff that I missed on the last meeting. So everything that we did at the last meeting is cleared off plus the items from the meeting before that you can see back to April twenty-fourth.
I do have a question.
Yes.
On that motion number twenty-twenty-one dot one-one-two. After seeing one of our councillors that went around vigorously to find these little items that were put out there, does that not fall under that, on there?
The art?
Yes.
Yes, Rita, Rita had, Rita had...
I'm not opposed to it.
No, Rita had members of the Art Society in the other day and asked them about getting their report. And I believe, Karen, did you, you overheard that conversation as well? That they were putting their inventory together?
I did not hear that, I'm sorry.
That's, I didn't hear the whole conversation.
Well, I know one councillor that probably knows exactly where all their inventory is, excluding one or two. But anyway, it, I just saw it there again and I had a question whether we have something that's on the table.
So anytime, no, anytime anybody from the Art Society comes in, we ask them for that report. And they have yet to bring another proposal back to councillors since we asked for that report.
I hate to be, you know, meany, but, you know, if one of these days they either have to do it or else we either have to eliminate this motion or we become the meany and take all their art down.
Take the art down, yeah.
And I hate to see us do either one because I think it's something that needs to be there so that it's not a burden on our community. It's like a group came and asked if they could hang stuff on our, on our streetlights and they would take it down and they have it. And so other people see this garbage hanging on the streetlights and think, well, I can take my garbage on the streetlight. And then after a while, you've got no paint on your streetlights because the garbage has taken all the paint off. And so I think if we're going to come up with a bylaw or a motion, somebody worked hard enough for a motion, that we either have to do something about it or rescind that motion or...
Yeah, well, and from that side on that motion, we are waiting for that working plan, right? To have a, to make sense of that for them to bring that plan back.
But again, it's like, you know, you can say, well, the speed limit's a hundred, but I'm doing a hundred and fifty. I keep on getting tickets, but I'm not going to pay them because nobody's going to do anything about it. So you either have to do something about it or...
Yeah, I think that's a good idea because I know that I'm with a group that did take some of their ribbons down. So I told them not to bother putting them up this year. I said, I don't think he'll get approval because you take them down last year. And it does look lousy if things are not well-maintained. And I think that...
But I think the art of...
The community likes looking good. And with the art, it's super important that it's done properly and maintained.
And again, I'm not personally opposed, I think that they have done a great job. But we have started something, but we have never ended it on our end and we need to or else.
I will talk to Linda about that and she'll...
She was in, like, just the other day and I still have to run it.
I'm gonna push it.
Yeah, we ask every time they come in.
Anyway, sorry.
Yeah. Well, that's the thing, that's the question, the ones that are outstanding, so.
I agree with the people taping stuff to our beautiful signs or our white poles. People come in and take pictures of them. And it just, to quote the famous Peter Griffin, that grinds my gears.
And our public's work, which crew does try to tape them down as quickly as they can.
And the thing is that, you know, like, some of them right now are repeat offenders, you know, and, you know, and they should know better, but...
We could do some board public education on that side of the police officer as well. They, most people put their phone number or address on those signs. They're good enough to do that for us.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the activity management report? If not, we'll go on to Seale.
Fairly busy, couple weeks, again, the town hall meeting, putting stuff together for that. I've got some ideas for bringing people in, but I won't do that on camera. Been working with Sima, the sports court tender. Again, we're quite shocked with the prices. So it was good to know that after reaching out that there was some reasons for that. We're with the Ag Society, they've been, they've reached out for some information on becoming a second insured under our name through the RNA insurance. So I've sent all that information off. Met with the CAO from Champion to talk about certified operator requirements because they've had some changes in their outworks. Did some work on utility right-of-way through Ninety-Jamison Road for the Marcus Foundation. Just getting background on that for as the building goes forward, there is a utility right-of-way that runs right through the middle, but we believe it's abandoned. So the company is out of business from what we can tell. So if and when that needs to be done, it'll just have to be done through a court order, which means lawyers, that sort of thing. So we're not going to do anything that's going to cost us any money until we actually have to do it. But it's not going to change the design of the building or anything at this point. So we just gathered the information that we could and then I called Judy and said, well, you're... We're going to start spending money on this, we better take it to council. And it was, that's where it stopped and we're good. So worked with the company on the final draft of the industrial purchase contract. That was a long thing back and forth because we dealt with a lot of, what if they do this? What if they do that? What if they do this? And I was glad when Lyle's only question was what it was today because we were, we started with his document, worked our way backwards into a, into a conditional agreement. So set up the lodge hall, all of those things. Apparently I put out too many chairs. I have lots of...
You have too many chairs in here.
I have lots of printed presentations. If anybody is in need of another one, just let me know. Attended the health and wellness for the AHS announcement. Scott did a much better job of presenting it than AHS did at the event. So I'm glad that he was able to get that messaging through. I was away for one day since last meeting. My formal meetings, obviously, met with sports court, onsite meeting for Pretender. We met with Noble Concrete about operation planning. Interestingly enough, they, Tom didn't mention it, they also mentioned that they, with the increased capacity, they're also going to talk to the home marge there as well, try to get a good working relationship with them as well, like through that side as well. Because a lot of folks that, well, knows that live in that area will, you know, are tempted to phone and complain about the cement plant. The cement plant was there there before. That land that they're living on was rezoned to residential, not the other way around. So...
They actually do a really good job of watching where they're going, keep an eye on them. They do a really good job.
And it was very interesting because Tom and I had the conversation with them. They talked about scaling up operations, seeing more traffic, those sort of things. And that's what they wanted to reach out to the community about. And I drove by the next day and there was nine trucks lined up. And I had never seen that other than when they were bored at the elevators. So it was good. It, I, they, they seemed, they seemed to want to invest in our community and use this as a hub for good product, which is really good for us. So the town hall meeting, obviously, everybody else has mentioned that, so I won't. Alberta Transportation and the Marcus Foundation access, they had that one. Everybody else has talked about that. We attended it. Until they get the application, they can't say yes or no. And the feeling that I got from speaking people off the record is, it makes sense. It sounds favorable. So we're hoping that that's the way it goes. And the sports court tender, that you all saw the report on.
The only thing I noticed on your report was just, it should go June ninth through June twenty-third, Friday?
Oh, June ninth, so June ninth?
Yeah.
Yes.
I saw it ahead of time and I just, Judy would call that for me.
I did everything since the last council meeting. It was all on one day, all of the thing. It was a busy day. That's why I took one sick day. I needed some sleep.
No.
Yeah, exactly.
Really, from a community member's standpoint, addressing mostly assessment information. A lot of folks coming in and just asking why the assessment changed so dramatically. And most of those people aren't people that are selling their homes. So, and then tax rates and...
So obviously, Kim or administration did a pretty good job because none of them showed up.
Yes, exactly.
And we very specifically, in my phone conversations with folks before that town hall meeting, was if your issue is with the assessment, then you need to take it up with the assessor. If it is with the mill rate and the budget and your tax rate, then we're having a town hall meeting to explain all of that, what the money's being spent on, where is the budget, all of those things. And those folks were able to help, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention Doug Hendricks also spoke at that Alberta Transportation and said the difference of pulling all the way around to get there, the second sometimes count with these seniors to get them immediately sold. That was a strong push for it to go through, too.
Okay, go ahead.
And the last thing on my report, it's not on my report, but through July. Anytime I take more than two weeks off, I obviously bring it to council for permission. I will be taking time off in July, but it'll be midweek to midweek. And I'm just going to do five days at a time. So eight times where I'm not in the office, I'll send out emails to you all. And then in August, I'll come back with our meeting for my vacation in August. That's okay?
Yep, yep.
It's good.
Okay, any questions for Kim on either one of those two? If not, some wish to move to Richard moves the administration reports?
I don't want to look them up on your face.
Any discovery on Richard's motion? If none, we'll call the question, all in favor?
You're ready, go.
Well, we need one more motion. Bill moves that we adjourn?
Didn't even work at that very hard.
No, he didn't even have an idea.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, let me stop for the camera and then I'll give you my idea for the next town hall meeting. Celebrity boxing match.